I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you, welcome all guests and council, thank you. Right now, I'd like to turn the meeting over to councillor Michael Swagstraw, he's got the opening today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've heard a lot about the environment in the news lately. Obviously, the environment affects all of us and we must take care of it. This means we should live responsibly, reduce our waste, and do what we can to preserve our planet's biodiversity. Faced with such a daunting task, it is tempting however, to gravitate towards quick-fix solutions. Since much of our waste is plastic, some governments have taken to banning single-use plastics as a way of dealing with this problem. For example, at the AMM Eastern District Meeting last month, a majority of municipal councillors voted in favor of a resolution asking the province to ban single-use plastic bags. At the federal level, Prime Minister Justin Trudeau recently announced that if re-elected, his government will ban single-use plastics by 2021. Unfortunately for Trudeau, his announcement quickly went off the rails when a reporter asked him how he and his family have reduced their reliance on single-use plastics. Trudeau's stammering response that he had switched away from plastic towards paper-like drink box, water bottle sorts of things was as revealing as it was cringe-worthy. Clearly, the Prime Minister has done nothing in his personal life to reduce his use of single-use plastics. In fact, an access-to-information request by journalist Sheila Gunn-Reed revealed that the Trudeau family spent $300 on plastic water bottles in a single month. Not only that, within days of his big announcement, Trudeau posted a photo of himself having a pizza lunch with constituents in his riding, with a big box of plastic cutlery clearly visible. However, there is more to this issue than Trudeau's obvious hypocrisy. No doubt Trudeau finds it hard to lead by example because single-use plastics are so widespread that we often use them without even realizing it. Plastic bags, water bottles, plastic utensils, and straws are but a few examples of the very practical uses of plastic. Consider something as simple as plastic bags. A growing number of municipalities have jumped on the plastic bag ban bandwagon, and the state of California banned plastic shopping bags in 2016. But shoppers still need something to carry their groceries home. Rebecca Taylor, an economist at the University of Sydney, recently conducted a study of the effects of California's plastic bag ban and uncovered some surprising results. While people in California no longer used plastic shopping bags, purchases of plastic garbage bags rose dramatically. Since garbage bags are made up of more plastic than shopping bags, plastic consumption actually didn't decline by as much as expected. In addition, many people switched to paper bags, which studies have shown to be worse for the environment than plastic bags. In short, Taylor found that California's plastic bag ban was a perfect example of the law of unintended consequences. As for reusable cloth bags, it turns out that they're even worse for the environment than plastic bags or paper bags. An analysis last year by the Danish Environmental Protection Agency showed that when you take the entire lifecycle of bags into account, which includes the greenhouse gas emissions produced when they are initially made, shoppers would need to reuse an organic cotton bag more than 20,000 times before it becomes more environmentally friendly than a single-use plastic bag. Even banning plastic water bottles isn't as easy as it sounds. Currently, there are nearly 60 First Nations reserves across Canada with boil-water advisories in effect. Shortly after Trudeau's announcement, several First Nations leaders raised concerns about how this ban will affect them. Obviously, when boil-water advisories are in effect, plastic water bottles are a necessity, not a luxury. I doubt that most of these communities have paper-like drink box, water bottle sorts of things as a backup. If we are serious about helping the environment, let's stay away from the draconian bans that sound great in theory but create real hardships for many people. Our job as municipal politicians is to exercise a level of discernment. Instead of jumping on board of feel-good campaigns, let's make sure that we focus on the things that really do matter in our city. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Swagstraw. Obviously, things are not always as they seem. Okay, number three, we have the agenda to adopt, it's right in front of you, need a motion to approve. Councillor Penner, second by councillor Hebert, call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Number four, we have the minutes of June 18, 2019, the regular council meeting, they start on page one, we've all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Councillor Jake Hebert, second by councillor Penner. Any comments?
No comments, thank you.
No comments? Okay, call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, forward. We'll move on to 6A, the public hearing, it is just a little after 7:35. There'll be a conditional use 2019-03 and a variance 2019-13. They relate to the same property council, we will take care of them together, first the conditional use, and if that is successful, we'll move on to the variance. At this time, I would like to close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Warrentine, would you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is both a conditional use application, file CU-2019-03, and a variance application, file V-2019-13, both for properties with a civic address of 216 Hanover Street. The owners of the property are Blair Reimer and David Friesen, the applicant for the conditional use, and the variance is Blair Reimer. The purpose of the conditional use application is to allow a multifamily residential development within the C1 commercial neighborhood zone, and the purpose for the variance application is to remove the commercial component requirement on the main floor of a multifamily building within the C1 commercial neighborhood zone. The applicant is proposing to build an eight-unit residential building on the subject property. Notices as are required under the Planning Act have been issued. At the time of agenda preparation, there were two registered objections that council would have seen in its agenda package. Since the assembly of the agenda last week, there's been one additional piece of correspondence, a letter of objection to the application, that is put in council's mail bins earlier today. With respect to the applications, administration has reviewed them as a joint file, so the comments that are related to both the conditional use application and the variance application are virtually identical. Generally, as far as the request to locate a multifamily development within the C1 commercial neighborhood zone, there has been precedent that has been provided in the agenda package where council has approved these applications in the past. Generally, there are no concerns from administration, and recommendation is that council approve the conditional use application, subject to the prior execution of a development agreement, and should council proceed to approve the conditional use application, recommendation from administration is also that council approve the variance application subsequent to it.
Thank you, Mr. Warrentine. Is the applicant here today?
Yep.
Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Take the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Blair Reimer, I live at 38 Newcombe Crescent in Winnipeg. Vacancy rate right now in Steinbach is, according to CMHC, is at 1.3%, which is very low for rental homes, and so 1.3% being very low, if you're someone moving to Steinbach looking for a home to live or to rent, you could be in a little bit of trouble because there may not be suitable for the, what they want to move into or their family would like to move into. And there are a lot of people moving to Steinbach, whether it's for jobs that Steinbach has, or whether it's for retirement community, which is actually a very large community that moved to Steinbach just to retire, and some of these homes that I'm building here are going to be ideal for a retirement family. It would be better right now to have more selection available for the public just because of the low vacancy rate of working through. I'm building an eight, like they said, I'm building an eight-suite apartment building. They're all going to be two bedrooms, they're going to have one bathroom, they're going to be roughly 750 square feet each, they're all going to have an outdoor patio that faces the parking lot. This is going to allow for retired people, young marrieds, young families starting out to have a place to move to and live at a very reasonable rental rate. Growth does continue in Steinbach, and it's good to see more and more people move into the area and call southeastern Manitoba their home.
Stay at the podium for a minute.
Sure.
Councillor, any questions for the applicant? Councillor Penner?
A question for administration.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I'm understanding our notes correctly, if this was going up and the main floor was commercial, would it even come through council?
Yes, the conditional use would still be required. The City of Steinbach use table within the zoning bylaw does require that commercial be present on the main floor of all multifamily development within that zone. The variance application is to waive that requirement so that the main floor could be residential component.
Right, so if he, if he had just come to the city and said, "We're going to do commercial on the main floor, residential on the second," that would be fine?
Conditional use would still be required for the residential component.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Swagstraw?
I have a question for administration, and then it might be for the applicant after, depending on the answer. What are, my question for administration is that it's own commercial now, can you give some examples of, it's C1 neighborhood commercial, some examples of what could go there now without any public hearing process, as far as, as long as it met the other requirements? So what could be developed there?
I'll try and summarize as I'm looking for the use table, but generally, local, small-scale type of commercial enterprise where, for example, personal services business, such as a small office, perhaps a hair and nail salon, but typically a commercial type of operation that is intended to serve the general neighborhood within several blocks.
A 7-Eleven convenience store type be permitted?
That I would have to see, I would have to confirm, if you'd just give me a moment. Generally, retail sales are permitted, subject to certain conditions that are referenced within the zoning bylaw, but that would take a little more research to find.
That's good. Question then for the applicant.
Yes, go ahead.
Could you just explain a little bit, like you talked about the need for rental housing and all that, can you just explain specifically why you're choosing to not have any commercial as part of this, and why you've settled upon eight units? Why not six or four, why not single-story? You've chosen eight units, two-story, and I suspect there's some people that have some concerns regarding that based on the objections we've received. Could you comment on why this size and why no commercial, just outline your thought process on that?
Well, I guess for development purposes, you try and maximize the space the best that you can, and yet still have housing that is very comfortable for people to still live in. I suppose, and also, I guess with the eight was how, probably the most I could do based on the size and for parking available to the site. Why all residential, it just, to me, it made more sense to go more residential as there's a lot of commercial being built right now in Steinbach and outskirts of Steinbach, a lot of vacancy rate, or a lot of vacancies I should say, within the commercial, low vacancy rate for residential, I thought this would be a better fit for Steinbach, especially downtown core. You have a lot more, again, for the people who are retiring and moving into town, the main floor is ideal for them because they don't have any stairs to climb, they can go straight in, they're in the core of downtown, I think that would be good for Steinbach to have more people, more families in the core, close to shopping, close to the library, Splash Park is just around the corner, school, just Kitty Corner pretty much is a school, and of course, just not to mention all of the shopping that's available right in the town of Steinbach. So ideal place to put more families so close to downtown, so that would be why I would want more residential units rather than commercial.
Councillor Seaman, you have a question.
Mr. Reimer, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just, one of the things that, this is a transitional zone as well, right? This is from residential to commercial, so it's a transitional zone, and one of the things that, how do you build in a transitional zone, how do you build that, how do you do that? We have our view as a council to do that, and now we've got this before us, but one of the things is the neighborhood. All of our neighbors, have you talked to any of the neighbors in that area to see what their reaction is to?
I didn't talk to anybody, no. Councillor Swagstraw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the concerns that has come in is regarding the current state of the property there now. How long have you been the owner of this property?
Boy, I think around two years. Yeah, I have a tenant living there right now, so the tenant is aware that they need to be, keep, upkeeping the property, but I mean, it's one of those where it's, they're aware, and they need to be keeping it up, but it's, I don't know, what more could I say? It's, if they're aware of it, they should be doing it, and they have a lawnmower, they have all the things to do to keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to administration?
Yes.
Through you. Mr. Warrentine, in the report from our city engineer, it says the application doesn't have a proper plan provided yet, there's multiple issues with the access approaches, et cetera. To clarify, this plan that is submitted in terms of being an apex and two-story may not necessarily be the plan that is actually approved and built. We're more looking towards the, are we okay in council with there being multifamily dwelling, not necessarily this exact?
Well, I'm taking from your comments, you're likely asking two questions. The first one, with respect to the engineer's comments, yes, there has been a concept plan provided by the applicant, the final plan has not yet been approved by administration, so it could certainly change the footprint or the layout, depending on what is physically allowable or capable within the lot that's there. Secondly, as far as, I'm sorry, your second question, your second part was again?
More of, we're not necessarily voting today, or looking at this on council as this particular plan, but we're looking at more, should we be allowing more of a transition area with multifamily dwellings?
Right. Administration does try as much as possible to provide as up-to-date information for council during the public hearing, and obviously for the public. This proposed plan by the applicant does show one version of what might be possible on that site. However, at this point, the specific questions of the conditional use is to permit multifamily within the C1 zone, and the specific question of the variance application is to permit a residential component on the main floor, whereas a commercial component is required. And whether or not council is comfortable making that decision based on a concept plan that hasn't been formally approved by administration, that would be a question of, that council would have to deal with.
Yes, councillor Hebert.
Mr. Reimer, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Reimer, most of this area, my understanding, going around the area there, it's single-family dwelling, very few duplexes, if any, in the area. I'm going to piggyback on councillor Swagstraw's questioning. Did you at all consider maybe a couple of duplexes there in that area? And the concern I have is single-family dwelling and suddenly going up to eight in one complex, that changes the ambiance, or lack of a better word, in the area. I'm just wondering if that was considered at all?
I considered a lot of options there, I considered that, I considered a sixplex as well, I ended up with the eightplex. I understood that the City of Steinbach is looking for more families to move into the core of downtown, that's what I understand. And so that's what I'm proposing here, is to bring more families into the core of downtown. There is precedent just down the road with, I think it was 24 that went up just a few doors down, and I think if Steinbach will allow, I think we may see more and more of this because it's just going to be really good for Steinbach to have more families in the core. I do have some plans that were drawn up that have the frontal view, the layout, and also the garbage truck study that I did, so that the garbage truck can actually come in and out of this site, which was the first step in getting approval to even be here today. So there is a preliminary plan for the property that has, that looks and appears that it will be approved and work on the site. I don't know if you would care to look at it?
I believe we have it.
I think we have it in our package.
Okay, all right.
Thank you though.
Yep.
Just further on that.
Go ahead.
In your application, you say that, I'm aware that's a transitional zone, but in your application you say it's, an eightplex would benefit the area. How do you view that would benefit the area when most of the people in that area are a single-family?
Well, it will benefit the area because the, just to bring more families into the area, that's what I mean, the area of basically giving all of the core of Steinbach being the area, right? It's going to be good for the core of Steinbach, downtown Steinbach to have more families, that's what I meant by that.
I have one question for administration. Mr. Warrentine, at the present zoning, the C1 zoning, what is the maximum height that can be built on that property?
Just give me one moment, Mr. Mayor, and I can find that out. Mr. Mayor, the maximum height for a commercial building within the C1 zone is 15 feet.
So does the going two stories, does that?
Pardon me, I misspoke, that was for an accessory use. The maximum height for a building being a principal use within the C1 zone is 30 feet.
30, okay, so two stories falls within that, okay. Thank you. Kate, seeing no other questions, we'll probably need you to come back to the podium later, but you can sit down now.
Okay.
Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Would you like to take the podium and state your name, address?
My name is John Dirksen, I live at 325 Elm Avenue, so if you look at the site plan that I gave you, you can see that to the right of the page, right adjacent to this property by four feet. Just to start, in hearing this, what, it was a week, week and a half ago, I went through the neighborhood, you'll notice on the bottom right corner of that page, all the houses with red dots on them, which is about 60% of the houses, it was 100% of the houses that I actually was able to get to the owner and speak to, was opposed to the project. Out of the 30-some proj, or 37 houses that we canvassed to in the close proximity, nine of those we couldn't get a hold of. Might be because I was coming by in a clipboard and looked like I was trying to sell something. So, my name's John Dirksen, I'm a registered architect in the province of Manitoba, and I'm proud owner of our home on Elm Avenue. We built that home five years ago with the desire to live in that neighborhood for its maturity, for the historic homes that are in the neighborhood. There's a heritage home right across the street from us, across from the street from the proposed project, as well as a few houses down. It's a wonderful neighborhood, as Blair mentioned, however, there is no desire for it to change, and I don't see the merit in having a multifamily housing unit as such in this neighborhood. There's many properties, there's empty properties on the east side of Steinbach that are already zoned for multifamily, that are sitting dormant, that could be used for such a project, and they're not. You can look at that site plan, because it's maybe a bit easier for you to see, in order to accommodate eight units, that is the maximum you can fit on this property. In order to accommodate, for multifamily residential, you need 1.5 parking stalls plus 10% for additional people that are, let's say pizza delivery or whatever the case may be. So in order to achieve that, it's 13.4 parking stalls, I believe. In doing so, you can only, you can only fit so much on one singular lot, especially of this size, so eight units is the max. And I've studied it, so I've figured it out. So like I said, I'm in opposition of this, along with many of our neighbors, we have 54 signatures there petitioning against this project. This property's zoned commercial C1, I'm, as an architect, I study the bylaws a lot, so I understand it and I can reference it and figure out what's actually would work, what we're actually trying to do as a city. I'm not on town council and I'm not a city planner, but I do feel strongly that we move in a proper direction as a city overall, and I hope that my presentation right now, you guys would hear it not just for my project, obviously, it hits, it hits close to home being a next-door neighbor, but also for future projects in the city, if we could have a little bit more oversight and consideration for future projects. The property's zoned commercial C1 with a transitional zone POD. The transitional zone POD is designed, quote-unquote, if you look at the first page after the site plan, it's for transition between commercial concentrations and predominantly residential areas where residential and low-impact commercial activities can coexist in a mixed-use environment. Development within this category is to retain current built forms and lock configurations, and is encouraged to create mixed-use redevelopment. This variance application is intended to go against that, first and foremost. Page two, PODs may not be used to add to the list of permitted or conditional uses, which is fine, or increase density. The design of a transitional zone POD is not to increase density much, much against what some people think the transitional zone POD is for. In the long run, what many people want to see in a zone such as this, and what I believe what it was intended for and what the bylaws would state, are for businesses such as, exactly like one of the councillors mentioned, was to have different home-based businesses, ones that don't actually deviate from the aesthetic and the desire to live in that neighborhood. The former PS Cakes is a good example, Eva's Nails on First, that's a good example. This allows people to both work at their home in a much more economical way, still make a living, while blending commercial and residential together. The other, another thing the bylaws ask for is that the spaces would be, landscape spaces, streetscapes, and architectural features should be respected, including the preservation of trees. This property, you'll look at the picture on the first page, is, a good portion of it is a forest. There's a few areas on the property that are barren, but there's a good portion of very mature trees, and that would all be removed if you look at the site plan to accommodate 14 parking stalls. Not only that, but in order to accommodate what WUSP is proposing for the garbage pickup, one of the few remaining beautiful, healthy elms on Elm Avenue would have to be removed, and that's a public tree. I'm sure you are all aware that we have Dutch elm disease issues in the area, and they've been, we've probably lost about five or six in the last two years on our street. This is one of the few that wasn't impacted, and it will now have to be removed. Along with multiple trees, all the dashed trees on that property, on the site plan, those are all, would have to be removed. The trees directly adjacent to that property are between 216 and 222. A young couple just purchased that house. They've been taking a lot of pride planting trees on their lot. They have a garden that they're growing. The three large mature trees that are sitting directly on the property line would be required to, if not completely removed, they would have to lop off half of the canopy in order to accommodate the proposal. The long and short of it, this proposal doesn't even take into consideration the bylaws that are required for replanting trees. There's actually not enough room for it. If you look at the, I have a few trees that are along Elm Avenue on the site plan that I put there as a guideline. So, every 30 lineal feet of a property, you have to have one planted coniferous or deciduous tree, along with three shrubs for every 20 feet, which provides a buffer and it's nice. The problem is, is that this plan won't accommodate for it. And it can't, because it needs every square foot of space for parking. So, another comment, and this was already brought up, but there's no, from my understanding, I received all the documents from Lacy Giddet. I requested them as soon as I found out. There's no, there's no approved lot grading plan yet. That site, in particular, adjacent to my property, has very poor drainage. I'd ask that if this was in any capacity moving forward, that site drainage would be taken into consideration prior to any approved development. Once, I've seen this time and time again, approved development gets approved, now an engineer, civil engineer, is forced to somehow shoehorn a lot grading plan in, and there's Band-Aid solutions that don't work, and it creates problems. Another thing, as I said, I built my house there five years ago, and our neighbors now just purchased, the young couple just purchased that house. We've taken pride in our properties, including many of our neighbors. When I did build my house, I did every effort possible to keep every tree on sight. There was only one tree that I had to remove that was dead. So, I designed the orientation, the shape of my house around the trees. It's, I beat it with, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but this area has strong appeal because of its maturity. And the third point that I just want to bring up is that this hurts equity. It's gonna hurt my equity, and I'd like for you guys to turn to document two, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, document two, I have a few examples for you. I don't want to come here and present to you making claims that I think it's bad, I think it'll be bad, or I want this because I think it will be good. I needed something to prove to you what these developments, when they're not considering their neighbors, what they can do for people's equity. So, a house on 299 Lowen Boulevard, I got this all from the real estate board. I had a Realtor in Steinbach help me out with this. 299 Lowen Boulevard, in August 2012, was purchased for $206,000, or $2,650. Following the purchase, the homeowner put in a new maple kitchen, new flooring, new furnace, and new deck. So, let's say lowball that at $20,000. This equals an all-in investment of approximately $226,500. With average inflation, by the time they actually wanted to sell, would have been a value at approximately $245,000. Once it was confirmed that the house would be adjacent to a new apartment building, the homeowner decided to sell and move. The house was unable to sell four separate attempts, and finally, four years, seven months after the purchase of the home, it sold for $185,000. If you consider that with inflation, that's a 24.5% hit on that, on the value of that property, or $60,000. Without even considering inflation, because that could be, that could be a subject that everyone has a strong opinion on, it would still be, it would still be 18.3% or $41,500 lost on a property that was only originally purchased for $200,000. To go even further, if we put this into perspective, he bought the property the first day, did no renovations to it. The next day, there was apartment building appeared right beside it. They would have sold it and the next day, and lose $21,500. This may look like a one-off example that I could sink my teeth in so that you all buy into the fact that we could lose equity in our homes. But three comparable two-bedroom houses, all sold with, all purchased and sold within a very similar timeline, 327 Southwood Drive, comparable renos. I have all the documentation for these, by the way, in the package. Purchased for $182.5, sold five years later for $202, 11% increase, $20,000 worth of increased value in that property. 71 Oak Crescent, same thing, two-bedroom. The only thing they did was put in a new furnace. $175,000 purchased, sold for just over $200,000. That's a $25,000 increase in the same amount of time. Third example, 280 Hanover Street, bought for $178,000, sold four years later in the comparable timeline, at the same time within that 2002 and 2017, sold for $204,900. That's a 15% increase in property value, $27,000 increase in equity. I did not buy my home, or build my home five years ago, and we put in everything we could. We want to live in this neighborhood for as long as we want, as long as we can. And I can't stand, when I see a hearing like this, I can't sit on the sidelines and say, who cares if I lose $40,000 just from an approval, a council meeting in one evening? So, I ask that, in the long run, I ask that you take that into consideration. Think about it from a very practical standpoint. The apartments that Blair was using as an example, there's vacancies right now. There's a sign in front looking for renters. There is not a need for 216 Hanover to have an apartment building. If we continue this path, my fear is that homeowners in these different types of neighborhoods are gonna lose faith in what happens in our city, and we're gonna be forced to take our assets and move to somewhere much more stable, where we can ensure that we are not gonna lose money. So, I ask that you would take this into consideration, and thank you very much for your time.
Any questions of council? Councilor Penner?
Thank you for your presentation, John. I appreciate the time and energy into that. Out of curiosity, what would you be comfortable with there? As is, single family, are you okay with some multi-use there? In your opinion, what would you be okay with?
Well, I like the transitional zone POD. I think that's a smart way of planning a city. There should be a blend. There's a lot of successful precedents in city planning across the world that would say that that blend is good. When you look in the city corridor and area and stuff like that, there's lots of, there's lots of commercial and residential working together, but it's working together in a careful matter. At the end of the day, yes, obviously, I'd love to see it as a single family dwelling. Am I, would I, would I just die on that hill? No, absolutely not. I'd be much, I'd be completely comfortable with a much more considerate and thoughtful approach to this property, not simply maximizing the property, tearing down absolutely everything, turning it into a parking lot to get to squeeze eight units on there. I would be open to a reduced number of units. I'm not opposed to multifamily. I would love to see it maintain its commercial transitional POD, the intentions of the neighborhood in the first place, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to object? We have it there on purpose, because the cords are so short. Yes, would you like to take the podium, state your name and address, please?
Jim Reimer, 228 Hanover. Thank you, John, for what you did for us all. There are many people here that represent what John has spoken about. John has done a good job. I did not prepare the way John did. I just got home from the holidays. I only found out about this. Anyhow, we've been living in the neighborhood for over 30 years. We've maintained our house. And as I walk around the neighborhood, there have been many recent upgrades to the neighbors' houses. People have been spending money on their homes. And this level of density would not be conducive to the neighborhoods that we are trying to build. The precedent of the building that was brought in, in the middle of our block, was done with consultation with the residents before ever coming to city council. It was done respectfully, and there's a limit to how many of those types of projects you plant in any one area. And so, you space those sort of things out in order to maintain the character of the neighborhood. To just keep doing the same thing over and over again, just completely eliminates what we've been able to maintain thus far. So, I just ask that you consider whether it's really necessary to concentrate density in one area of the city, the way this is happening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I'll ask again, is there anyone else wishing to object? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else wishing to object to this spot? Seeing none? Should we go into make the decision for, okay?
Just ask the question.
Yes.
There are people that do object, but they don't come here to speak up about it. I just asked them to raise their hands as to their position. I think that was clear enough.
Are there signatures on this paper?
Yes.
Okay, that'll say enough. Okay, at this time, I'd like the applicant to come up and respond to your objections.
I understand where you're coming from, John. I really do. This whole area is zone C1, C2. C2 is much worse than C1. And that's not too far down. It's only a few doors down from you where there's some C2 zoning. Commercial building, I could build a commercial building just like that and take down all the trees, parking lot, the whole nine yards, without even a blink of an eye. What I'm proposing is a nice-looking building backing onto 222. So, the back of it's gonna be on 222. There's a good amount of green space between the building and your house. There's gonna be a fence, a really nice fence, a very, very nice fence. The other plan I had was a six suite, which would then back onto your property line, 325, the way the parking was gonna be. I do have green space available on this plan. I have 22 shrubs planned for three trees. I was gonna be replanting some trees along the boulevard to bring up the tree level, because there's certainly room on the boulevard to bring more trees. I was certainly considering all of that. Lot grade plan was in the works. WSP was asking me when we should go ahead with that. I wanted to get approval here first. I would go through the paces of going through the properly engineered lot grading plan so that there will be no water issues at all, concrete curbs, the whole nine yards. This is not a joke. This is a real, live building with a real live parking lot with actual green space and trees. And it won't be an ugly building. It's gonna be a good-looking building.
Oh, you'll have to go to the podium, please. We tape everything, that's why. That's where the microphone is.
Oh, right, fair enough. Okay, so my question would be, how are you addressing 222? Your initial proposal would tear down the trees that are lining 222, mature trees, and that neighbor would lose three trees that are actually sitting directly on the property line. The trunks are, one is two and a half foot diameter, and the other are two, literally planted right on the property line, which those trees would be, would be gone.
I will try and keep as many, oh, sorry. I will try and keep as many trees as possible. Obviously, I don't like the thought of picking trees down either. But the fact of the matter is, is this is a C1 neighborhood, and the city of Steinbach is planning something here, more than just having R1 residential homes. This is not R1. R1, there's many, many neighborhoods in Steinbach that are zoned R1, R2, and this is a different ball of wax right here in the C1 neighborhood. So, trees are gonna have to go, depending on what one decides to build. And really, there is, not the sky's the limit as to what could be built on there, but there is certainly a lot of options as to what could be built there other than having it as a residential home right now. But I will try and save as many trees as I can.
One last thing, sorry. It's been talked about a lot, that this is a commercial property. Transitional POD trumps commercial property. That's an overlay that restricts what you can do on a commercial property, okay? You cannot just put a five-story building, or whatever you want to do on a commercial, on a transitional POD. That is not, as long as we're following the bylaws, then you can't do it. So, remember that this is intended not to change the character of the area to the point where you're supposed to maintain trees, and you're supposed to have thoughtful architecture that actually is thoughtful, not only to the property, but also to the neighborhood. And it is intended to transition commercial into this neighborhood by way of home businesses, small-scale business. So, I just ask that, that doesn't get lost, that we don't keep calling this just a commercial building. It's not like a C1 or a C2. It has a transitional POD for a reason. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the developer one more time. Would you like to rebuttal to that?
No, I have no rebuttal.
No, okay. Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swakeser?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Okay, do we have a second? Counselor Siemens? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Swakeser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whenever we have a conditional use hearing like this, or a variance, you know, it's always a balancing act, and this is why public hearings matter. We wait to hear what the applicant has to say, and then we also listen to what the neighborhood has to say. And I've heard some good parts, some good points by both sides. At the end of the day, there is, I think, the applicant missed a real opportunity to do what previous developers have done in this area, as Mr. Reimer had noticed, as had noted, which is consult with the neighborhood prior to this hearing. I had seriously thought that, you know, maybe we could salvage this with a motion to restrict to four units or six units, but I'm just not hearing enough of the, of the, that consultation spirit, let's put it that way. I think that the proper way to have done this would be, would have been to ask the neighborhood to give an opportunity for input, because I think something could have been balanced that would have worked appropriately. I think that tree could have been preserved. I think we could have probably gotten fewer units. But I'm just not comfortable drafting a motion right here on the fly, going, okay, we're gonna restrict to four units, we're gonna preserve this tree, and we're gonna preserve these other trees, and we're gonna try to put all these restrictions on just to try to get with what those concerns are here, when really, this could all have been worked out ahead of time, where this didn't, it did not have to come to this here. This, the argument that, yes, it is C1, it is commercial, yes, commercial could go there. But I haven't heard objections from the neighbors to commercial. I'm actually not hearing the neighbors saying, we're opposed to any commercial there. C1 is neighborhood commercial. There's limits to the, as has been noted, and in our own zoning bylaw, you can't just put anything in a C1 commercial zone. You're not going to put, you're not gonna put a car dealership there, we're not gonna put a mall there. Like, this is, there's significant limits. You know, there could be a convenience store type of thing that could go there, but I haven't heard opposition to that. And if the applicant or whoever owns this property in the future, depending on what happens, yes, they could go ahead and do that, and as long as it follows all the rules, that can be done accordingly. We, however, have a requirement that in a commercial zone, you have to have a conditional use, meaning that council has to approve. It's not automatic that we're going to allow residential within a commercial zone. We sometimes allow it and sometimes we do not. And in this case here, I've heard enough, I've heard some pretty strong concerns from the neighborhood and some well-reasoned concerns. I don't agree with every concern that's been listed. I will say, I'm impressed by the research as far as the property values question. But I will say that historically, you know, normally, property values do not go down when you have multifamily use nearby. There could be any number of factors that could affect this here in terms of an individual case. That being said, that's not the main thing that I'm factoring in. But I'm just putting it on the record that there are other things that need to be factored in there. But ultimately, I'm just not persuaded by the applicant's presentation. I'm not persuaded that there's enough, either prior or even now, willingness to seriously take the neighborhood's concerns into account and really develop something that would fit well in the area. So hence the motion to deny.
Anything further, Counsel Siemens?
That was a lot. A few comments, and just to repeat a few, I think, one of the things here is, as mentioned, this is a transitional area. And one of the problems we have as a council is, in these transitional areas, is the leapfrog effect. We've had that in other years, where in the transitional zone, going from residential to C1, in the transitional zone, that development doesn't happen in an orderly fashion. It happens in a fashion where lots become available and people want to develop those lots. And that's roughly what's happening here now, is so that it doesn't happen in an orderly fashion like we would like it to happen as a council, because we plan it that way, but that seldom happens that way. I am disappointed in the fact that, again, just to repeat it, but the fact that the neighborhood wasn't consulted in advance. We've had a lot of success in our community where the neighborhood is consulted on projects for development and redevelopment of areas. That allows for a lot of feedback, it allows them to make adjustments in the plan. And it's not been on council, administration, to make the decision, these hard and fast rules here. That happens before it ever gets here, and there's a conciliation process that happens and for a much better finished product that fits the environment, fits the neighborhood. Our neighborhoods in Steinbach are very special. And they're unique to themselves in these little micro-communities within our community. And I think Hanover definitely has that. As far as the trees go, those trees were planted probably eighty years ago, in the 1940s, 1950s. And they are healthy, that is there. We have had a strong Elm program to eradicate Dutch Elm seeds, we've been fairly successful with it. But, so we need to keep all those trees. I would be, the canopy on Hanover driving down in summer is awesome, as well as Elm street. But for all those reasons, but I vote in favor of the motion as it stands. But really, I think developers, over time, are moving into Steinbach. They need to embrace the community that they're moving into or want to move into and have the consultation process goes outside of council, that it's not a forced thing for council. For those reasons, I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you, anything further, Counsel Hebert?
Not to beat a dead horse, but if I could just piggyback a little bit on what's been said by Counsel Swigstra and Counsel Siemens. The people in the area have moved in here thinking it was a single-family dwelling, that they were going to raise their kids there and live there for whatever period of time. Suddenly, they're confronted with an eight-plex coming into the area. How do they deal with that? Having had no consultation has been evident. People are here frustrated, maybe even upset. I realize that's a transitional zone. And like Counsel Siemens said, the area, in my opinion, in my stand in the past and my stand remains, that if we're going to transition, transition from the outside in, as stated, do we leapfrog? And I have concerns about that. I guess the question of council is, does anyone in council want an eight-plex next to their house? And in saying that, though, short of this, should this be the litmus test? I don't think that is the litmus test, just considering that. And so I too am concerned about having an eight-plex in a single-family dwelling area, even though it's zoned, C1 or transitional. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything, Counsel Hebert?
Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate all of you coming out and voicing your opinions. I think that's very valuable, I appreciate John's presentation. We'd love to see something happening there, of course, because it's an older place and it's not well-maintained. But I hope we can come up with something that will work. But at this point, I feel like I need to vote with Mike LaHera and the rest.
Anything, Counsel Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support the motion as well. I also voted against the multifamily further down on Hanover, behind the library, because Hanover is, I think, a special street, and it's really tough, actually, in council to balance keeping nice, older neighborhoods and preserving them, which actually add a lot of uniqueness and value to the community, but also recognizing, yes, we do want to increase density downtown, and how do we do that? So it is a balancing act. But at this point, I'm going to continue with, I guess, my feeling that Hanover's a great street. It's well-maintained, most of the homes, it's great for starter homes, to get people into the house-buying market, as it were. And this particular plan does not work. However, I think something, I get the impression that something probably could be worked out for that.
Yes, I need to speak as well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reality is, yes, this is in a transition zone. And when you're looking at transitioning things, you have to look at the character of the neighborhood, of what you are transitioning from and what you're trying to transition to. I don't feel that, I should say, currently on Elm and Hanover, the character is nice front yards, it's lawns, it's trees, it's a beautiful tree canopy. This is essentially going to be, yes, there was a reference to slight green space off to the side, even behind a large sprawling parking lot on a corner lot. We are then changing an entire intersection, entire character of an area of that neighborhood. And so for that reason, I won't be, I will be supporting Counsel Swigstra's motion. Again, I will share the sentiment that I do feel that there is something that can be worked on this with proper consultation and to preserve the character of the neighborhood to everybody's satisfaction. I hope that that does come forward.
Anything closing?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I think the message here is very clear, that it's, this vote is a no to this particular project and the particular process by which this has gone by. It is not a no to any future development there. I fully believe, based what I've heard from the neighbors, that there is something that could work there. And I hope that whatever happens in that area, that there is a more extensive public consultation progress, process, so that way we can have something that really fits in the area.
Thank you. Well, Counsel, before I ask, call for the question, I just want to say thank you to the developer, to the neighborhood, for your comments, for your presentation, and the time you spent to get ready. One thing I do want to say, I'm the poster child for RMD, hosing behind my hopes. We live on Lumber Avenue and we've got Stone Creek beside us. And on the back of us, we've got the, I think it's called Brookdale Terrace. It works, it works fabulously, but we kept all our trees there, too. The developer consulted with the neighborhood, picked the trees they were going to keep, they watched sightlines, they made sure that our privacy was going to be protected. Very well done. I'm not saying that this is the right plan for you guys, but there is going to be something that's going to work for you. It's not this. What works for us in lumber, on lumber, wouldn't work for you here. But I'm just saying that infill does work and, but we're voting for this because this is the wrong project for this area. It's not that every project will be wrong. But thank you very much for coming out, for being passionate about where you live and passionate about where you're investing your money in your home. And for that, we'll call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Thank you. We will not be dealing with the variance, as we did not successfully approve the conditional use.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just to bring closure to the file, as there was a denial with respect to the conditional use application, I would also recommend that council does deal specifically with the variance.
Okay, so a denial for the variance, too, then? Okay. Okay, so we are dealing, do we have to go into a... No, he's saying, yes.
Can you just clarify now, going forward, how long it is till the applicant can apply again? If denying the variance now will prevent him from applying for a longer extended period of time?
Generally, the municipal act does not permit council to deal with the same issue for a period of one year in order to reverse its decision.
Regardless of how we, regardless of denying, if we can deal with the variance?
Essentially, the wording is, council may not reverse a decision within one year of having passed it.
So the conditional use and the variance?
Correct.
Okay, Counsel, we need a motion for the variance? Motion to deny the variance? To finish this file, okay. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Swigstra. Anything? Anything from counsel? Anything in closing?
Question to administration, please. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, just for clarification, because the conditional use was denied, then that matter of the conditional use cannot come before council for one year? Or is it the variance specifically that cannot come before council for one year?
Because there were two specific files for this particular development and they were dealt with as a joint application, it would essentially be the topic that were covered by both applications.
Anything in closing? Call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, Counsel, we'll go to 6B, that is variance 201917. That is for 210 Gulfview Crescent, starts on page thirty on our package. I would like to close the council meeting and open the public hearing. Mr. Worketeen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an application for variance file V-2019-17 for property of civic address 210 Gulfview Crescent. The owner of the property is Kimberly Friesen. The applicant for the variance is Ron Richter for Richter Construction LTD. The purpose of the application is to allow eight hundred and square, eight hundred and five square feet of accessory use, whereas the RSF residential, single-family zone permits a maximum of five hundred square feet. The owner is proposing to build an outdoor kitchen and gazebo on the subject property. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued, there is no written correspondence on the file. With respect to the application, recommendation from administration is that the city council approve the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Worketeen. Is the applicant here today?
I guess the owner is.
The owner is, okay. And would you wish to speak on this file? Okay, state your name and...
My name is Kimberly Friesen.
Okay, I just want to let you know, even though everyone else left, we're still interested in this.
Okay. It should be a breeze now, though. Yeah, I just, I was just wanting to build an outdoor area in my backyard. I think I have a very beautiful yard as well. It borders the golf course and the park. And so I want to utilize and maximize my space outdoors, so I have a kitchenette area for barbecue. And then I also have a fireplace on the other side with a pergola kind of in the center that I'm going to be putting out back there. So it is a bit larger, but the property, the way it's situated there, it is quite a large backyard. The neighbors are kind of, the way I'm angled, they can't really see. So I know I have talked to my neighbors, they are very comfortable with what I'm doing back there. The golf course seems to be okay with it as well. I'm also putting an open-roofed area on all of it, just because I am by the golf course and I just like to sit back there without having the, have to be worried about getting hit by golf balls. So that's the biggest reason why I'm having, like, because there is going to be roof lines. It is all open air, but there is going to be a roof line on most of it, just so it's... Yeah, just more of a protection thing, so...
Insurance line.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Oh, sorry. Counsel Siemens, yes.
So you did talk to the neighbors?
I did talk to Lyndon Friesen and Art Rumpel, yes. Yes, or they came and talked to me, I guess, yeah, they were quite curious with what's going on around there, so... But I am trying to, and I've also talked to the golf course, just to make sure, and they're aware as well. Just to make sure that it all kind of flows, like, it is, it's very beautiful there. It's like I have an extended backyard, so I want to make sure that it's as, kind of, just as nice as the park that it's by, so...
Okay, anything further? Okay, I guess you can take your seat. Is there anyone here wanting to object to this file? Is there anyone here wanting to object? I will ask one more time, is there anyone here wanting to object to the spot? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to approve? How would you like to proceed?
Trying to influence us?
Sublimity, yeah. Okay, Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Siemens, okay, Counsel Penner, go ahead.
Thank you very much, the site plans look good. Thank you very much for consulting with the neighbors, nobody's here to object. And plus, when I'm on the, what is that, the eighth hole, I won't be in your backyard. It'll bounce off hopefully and come back to the fairway, so I don't see any issues with approving this.
Anything from counsel? Anything in closing? Okay, Counsel will just make this easy, we'll go right to the question, call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Well, Kim, you're home free.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Counsels? 7E, there is no delegation. 78, or 8A, reports of recommendations, city manager, land sale, 3123 Industrial Road, starts on page forty-one. Mr. Worketeen, could you open or introduce this file?
Yes, the city has been in, is in receipt of an offer to purchase for one of the remaining vacant parcels of land, smaller lots that have been listed for sale, this particular one with an address of 123 Industrial Road. The offer to purchase has been submitted by Reimer Agencies LTD for the listed price of $75,000, with a possession date of November 1st, 2019. Recommendation is that city council approve the sale of land to Reimer Agencies LTD.
Thank you, Mr. Worketeen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Move to approve.
Second by Counsel Hebert. Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
Thank you, it's always nice when we can sell a commercial lot there in the industrial park, I guess it's industrial lot in our industrial park. I'm not sure how many we have left, but I don't think there's too many. So it's good to see that there's demand increasing for those lots.
I'd just like to add that I look forward to seeing development there. And that's what we have the land for, and totally in favor, yes.
Anything further of counsel? Yes, Counsel Hebert?
Question to administration, through you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed the list price is $75,000.
Yes.
And that would be minus the 6% real estate fee, so the city actually realizes $70,500 for that lot?
Approximately.
Anything further? Anything in closing, Counsel Penner?
Anything closing?
Well, Counsel, it's always exciting when new business is coming to town and we sell commercial lots. Those were developed a few years ago when we were on council. We voted to develop that road and make lots there and service them. And now I think they're just about all gone, which is, which shows incredible growth. We are growing as a city and commercial is very strong in our community. So at this point, we'll call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Vote in 9A, administration, accounts payable, on the back of the book. If all had time to look over it, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Jake Hebert. Any comments? Call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We've got 9B, minor subdivisions, that is on page fifty. These are subdivisions that we're taking care of by our permitting office. All we need to do is have a motion to approve them. Do I have a motion to approve? Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Hebert. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Hebert. Any, any comments?
If I read this correctly, it's just more for civic addresses and roll numbers and, I believe, am I correct, to administration?
These single-lot subdivisions typically are dealt with administratively. This, these lists of the minor subdivisions that are approved are submitted to council quarterly, just so council has an opportunity to review.
That's my understanding. Thank you.
Okay, good. Anything further of council?
Clear.
Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We got nine C, bylaw twenty-one twenty-three, first reading, that is the maximum speed limit. Starts on page fifty-one. Mr. Worketeen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a file that was provided to council at committee level earlier this spring, just indicating general recommendations with respect to the change in provincial legislation that came about in late 2018. Essentially, the Highway Traffic Act has been changed and has delegated the authority for individual municipalities to set speed limits for all roads or highways within its jurisdiction that it has authority. Essentially, that's everything except provincial trunk highways and provincial roads. And one of the other requirements of the change in legislation is that all municipalities need to enact a maximum speed limits bylaw by September first of this year. This is the bylaw that is being submitted for council's consideration. There have been some minor amendments from what was presented at committee. The schedule that is provided to indicate the actual maximum speed limits that are being recommended in the bylaw appears on page fifty-four with a reference map provided on page fifty-five, to give you a visual. At any rate, recommendation from administration is that council give this bylaw first reading, and administration would then go through final review, subject to any further amendments that council may wish to put in place before the bylaw proceeds to second and third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Worketeen. Council, would you like to proceed? Councilor Swakstra?
I'll make the motion for first reading.
Seconded by Councilor Hebert. Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager noted, the province has delegated responsibility for speed limits along municipal roads to municipalities. And so administration has conducted a review of roads within our city. And there's a number of roads where there are some moderate reductions in speed. You'll notice some of them particularly in some of the area that's been annexed for the arm of Hanover, it's been reduced from ninety to seventy kilometers an hour in some spots. Old Tom Road, there's a section there that's been reduced from, I believe it was seventy to sixty, it'll be reduced to sixty. And again, this is, this is reflecting the fact the city continues to grow, we continue to have more residents within the city. And so you have some streets where it used to be appropriate to have higher speeds, that now the lower speed is appropriate as you have more residential growth within an area. Obviously, the, the speed limit is going to change downward because of safety reasons.
Thank you. Anything further?
I'd just like to add, the province has given, in the letter that they've sent out and the changes made to the Highway Traffic Act, there's four areas that the city now has authority. And the authority over the speed limit, with authority to request changes on provincial roads. We also have residential parking bans and traffic control device regulations. So the motion, I believe, is on, the change here for this bylaw is for all of those four. If you look at the letter on page fifty-six, there's four different areas that the city, that the province has given authority to cities. Am I correct?
Yes, there, there are specific areas that the city can act on. However, the recommendations only for respect to the maximum speed limits is being recommended at this time.
Okay, so for clarification, council, today we are just dealing with the maximum speed limits.
That's correct.
Not the other three?
That's right.
My misunderstanding.
Anything further of council? Anything in closing? Okay, council, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We'll go to nine D, that is the bylaw twenty-twenty, the third reading. That's one twenty-six Maple Street, starts on page fifty-eight of your agenda package. Mr. Worketeen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, bylaw two one two zero for property with an address of one twenty-six Maplewood Street. This particular property has been the subject of a rezoning application to change it from an RLD residential low-density to an RMD residential medium-density to allow the development of a multifamily development on the site. The public hearing was held earlier this year, for which there were objections registered. With the rules that are in place for rezoning applications, all registered objectors at the city's public hearing had an opportunity to further object. There were no further objections received from the, the objectors at the public hearing. And as such, the bylaw may now receive third reading. Recommendation from administration is council give bylaw two one two zero third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Worketeen. Council, how would you like to proceed?
Questions for administration?
Go ahead, Councilor.
Is there not a petition on this file?
Yes.
And how many signatures were on that petition?
Approximately fifty.
So did that then now have to, just for clarification, does it not have to go to the municipal board?
The objections that were composed of members or individuals within the gallery, as well as the petition, all of those individuals were allowed a further opportunity to object directly to the municipal board. There were no further objections to the municipal board. And as such, the city of Steinbach now may proceed to give this bylaw a third reading.
Now, was the change in the act?
Not really. The opportunity to further object has always been in place. The change to the Planning Act dealt specifically with the number of objections required before a municipal board hearing is necessary.
Yes, Councilor Penner? So the objections they sent to the city, I was under the impression those, if they objected to the city on the file, that automatically went. So they've basically withdrawn their objection?
There wasn't a withdrawal. There was no further objection registered by any of the objectors to the city's public hearing. And as a result of no, being no further objections, there is no longer a requirement for municipal board hearing, and city council can proceed to give this bylaw a third reading.
Thank you, yes.
Motion to approve third reading.
Thank you, Miss, Councilor Siemens. Seconded by Councilor Damian Penner. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a file that we've had long discussion during the public hearing, and it was approved that we would forward. So this is to clarify now the developer can actually tear down that old house and put up a residential medium-density home for, I think it was a four?
Nine units.
Or a nine-unit structure.
Anything further? Anything further of council? Anything in closing? Council will call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Nine E, variance V two zero one nine eleven, that is also on one twenty-six Maplewood Street, starts on page sixty-six of our package. Mr. Worketeen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this variance application file two zero one nine dash one one was related to the rezoning that city council has just dealt with. The variance was connected to the property in the request of a lot width of fifty-six feet, whereas a minimum of seventy-five feet was required. As council has now given third reading to the rezoning bylaw, the variance may now be dealt with. Recommendation from administration is council approve the variance.
Council, would you like to proceed? Councilor Swakstra?
Motion to approve the variance.
Do we have a second, or? Councilor Penner? Go ahead, Councilor Swakstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The variance is obviously connected to the rezoning, and it should be noted that while this is a, it's not as wide a lot, it goes very deep, and so the configuration does work within this. And our administration are recommending approval that it is consistent with, with the developments proposed here.
Anything further? Anything from council? Anything in closing? Council, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Council, number ten, we have council question period. Are there any questions of council? Well, council, I, I have one. It's going to be a statement, and then it's going to be a question. Today, I had, a customer came in and has been a resident of Steinbach for a couple of years now, and came in to compliment on how well we take care of our city. The cutting, like how the boulevards are cut, how the, how Main Street looks, how the flowers are taken care of. And his biggest concern was he wanted to make sure that somebody was going to get a thank you for doing their job well. So my question is to administration. Mr. Worketeen, will you please pass that on to, to our staff? I just wanted to get that out there, that there are people that are so thankful and notice what our staff do, and our staff work so hard to keep our city looking good and keeping, just keeping everything open. And I just want you to, I'm just asking you to convey that back to our staff, Mr. Worketeen.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, I will do that.
Thank you.
I'll call a soft-ball question.
Well, he made me promise. He made me promise. And I said, we had a meeting tonight, and he said, okay, bring it up at your meeting tonight.
That's good.
Okay, number eleven A, correspondence and petitions, San Rat River Conservation District, read the minutes of May twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Page, starts on page seventy-three. Council will take that as information. Twelve A, they're seeing no other business. We'll go to thirteen, adjournment, motion to adjourn. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Hebert. All those in favor? That is carried. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, July sixteenth, 2019, at seven thirty.